Started yesterday.
Not enough time to get one.
We haven't had time to get her a nameplate yet. And we only hired her on Friday, and she started on Monday.
Wow. Fast track.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Is it an A?
Yes.
I E?
You got it.
I show 6:30, guys.
If I'm just gonna give it another minute to see if, uh, Pat attends. Did you remember?
I just checked. Joe's up there.
Well, he's always up there. He likes the hyper bob, which I can't blame him. If I'm just gonna give it another couple of minutes.
Oh, it's not gonna say.
You spelled it wrong. You didn't ask.
What? It's I E. Oh, it's on the... Oh, Scott. It's totally correct. I've been called way worse. Thanks. Now I'm official. It's...
But you have to approve them before you assign them.
I'll get a video of the sign.
That's for this, this one.
Yep.
Is it? Which ones are they?
They're not as structural as here.
Which ones are they? Which ones? I didn't actually look.
The March fifth. It's first month, so it goes from the prior one.
Does anybody normally give you any to sign?
Every.
No.
I guess the previous... I should have given you the ones from the previous.
It's like, well, this one, I didn't really just sign it.
Did they say draft on it?
The answer is no. There's gonna be a change to it anyway.
Okay. Well, we haven't heard from Pat. Should we get this rolling?
We will. Okay, Bill, you can start the clock, please. Uh, the planning commission, Eagle 19, 2022 meeting will be called at 6:30 PM. Will everyone stand in pious allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Thank you. So has everyone had the, uh, time to take a look at the, uh, minutes from the March 15th meeting? And are there any comments?
Just a question. Um, when it lists staff, um, Director Freiberger was not listed there. I'm not sure if that's planning staff or supposed to be all staff in general.
I think it was just an oversight.
Did we do the roll call?
I'm sorry. You're absolutely right. We did not do a roll call. Just jumping right on in. Roll call. Commissioner Fournette, you are here. Commissioner Maddox.
Here.
Commissioner Penno.
Present.
Present. Commissioner Freiberger.
Present.
Present. Commissioner Johnson.
Present.
Present. Commissioner Fatizzi, present. Uh, not present is Commissioner Huggins. Thank you, Joe.
Beth.
So back to the meeting minutes. On the second page, the only thing that I came across. Do a review again at the April 13th, 2022 Planning Commission meeting, and I believe it should be today's date.
Where was that?
On the second page. Steph will create a new draft incorporate above request from the planning commissioners to review again at the April 13th, 2022 meeting. It's just a typo kind of thing.
All right. We'll take care of that.
And I apologize. I believe I was looking at the March minutes, not the February ones for...
We are looking at the March ones.
Nope, that's, that's right. Never mind.
Any other comments? I guess that's no. So would someone like a motion to approve with the one amendment, the meeting minutes from March 15th, 2022? All in favor? Eyes?
I believe you need a, uh, motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
To approve the minutes.
Seconded.
Motion to seconded. So sorry. Uh, those in favor to approve?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? No? No nos, all ayes, motion carries. Onto the, uh, general public comments section of the, uh, meeting. Have we had anyone that, uh, submitted any, uh, questions, John? By email or mail?
Steph has not received any, um, public comments by email or mail.
So let me back up again. I'm sorry, people. I'm a little bit off tonight. The general public comments section will be opened at 6:36. Since there is no one in the audience and no emails or mails have been received, the general public comments section will be closed at 6:36. So onto the public hearing, we have two items on the agenda. And I believe the first item, the updates to the transportation element of the Cedro-Woolley Comprehensive Plan, File CPA 1-22. Mark, would you like to do a quick intro on that before we open it up to the public?
Certainly. Yes, Mark Freiberger, Director of Public Works. So you had a first, uh, look at this on the March 15th meeting. Basically, uh, this is a, a set of recommendations for, uh, updates to the Chapter III Transportation Element of the Comprehensive Plan. Uh, there were two, uh, larger, uh, changes that were spread in various places in the plan, which are talked about in the cover memo. Uh, the first one was to, the recommendation to update the level of service for minor arterials, or to clarify it actually, from, uh, uh, its confusion in the Policy section of the current plan, uh, where in Policy T 7.2, it's listed as Level of Service D for minor arterials in accordance with what it is for, uh, state routes in the city. Uh, in, uh, Policy 7.3, it's listed as Level of Service C, and we're recommending that it be, um, made consistently at Level of Service D uh, throughout the, the, um, transportation element. The second one was our recommendation to remove project, um, number, uh, let's see, the, uh, Hodgins Road Arterial Project, Extension Project, from the project list in the, uh, Comprehensive Plan, Chapter III. Basically, staff has been looking at this for a number of years, and as outlined in the plan, I've got five pretty specific reasons why I don't think that project should move forward. And, uh, so we're recommending that it be removed from the, uh, project list. This will also affect, um, the next addition that we do of our Transportation Impact Fee Schedule. That'll be done, uh, sometime later this year. We'll update that, because this will remove about, uh, $2 million from the project list values. I don't anticipate, by the way, any changes in the impact fees themselves, uh, detrimental from this. Uh, we expect that that same update will significantly reflect recent inflation. And so I imagine the impact fees will still go up even with the removal of this particular, uh, segment of the plan. And, uh, if you'd like to me to give you any additional details on that, I'd be glad to do so.
Thank you. So at this time, there is no one in the audience, so I don't think we have anyone who's going to be coming to the podium. Is there anybody online that would like to, uh, comment? Bill, is there anybody that, uh, you have logged in, or?
Everyone online has the ability to speak, so if no one is speaking, then there's nobody that, that is volunteering.
Okay, so at 6:40, we will open commentary on the updates to the transportation element of the Cedro-Woolley Comprehensive Plan, File Number CPA 1-22. If no one has any commentary, we will now close that portion of the public hearing at 6:40. Onto number two, John, Updates to the Capital Facilities Element of the Cedro-Woolley Comprehensive Plan to Address School Capital Facilities Plan and School Impact Fees, File Number CPA-2-22. Would you like to give an intro?
So before we, you know, so we close to the public hearing on the...
First matter.
The first matter.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, it would be normal, uh, action for the council, for the Planning Commission, to have a discussion and then potentially take action as recommended in the, the staff memo.
I'm having a problem. I have no access to the internet, so I can't see any of our documentation. So I'm a little bit frazzled by that, even though I did spend quite a bit of time to, uh, do it.
Uh, I have some, I have some paper copies, if you'd like to work from those.
That'd be great. Thank you. I, I did look at all the materials, so it's kind of like knocking off my, uh, flow here.
So yeah, let me, let me get you a copy of that. And, uh, staff actually recommends that we re- return to the previous item, uh, the transportation item, so, uh, we could have some Planning Commission discussion and hopefully some action today on that item. So let me bring this to you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
So the agenda and one...
I have the agenda already. It's just, this is what I'm looking at. Just the recommendations on the bottom of the list. So with that, would we like to open discussion on the first item on the public hearing?
John, is there... Do we know if, is there a recommended action in this memo? It's a PC memo too. Is that what we're looking at here?
Mm-hmm.
Of 92 pages?
Mm-hmm.
Is it at the very end?
Mm-mm.
I'm sorry. I'm just missing it.
Let me see. I just gave mine away, so I have to look at Mark's. So there's, uh, no, we didn't include a, um, we did not include a, uh, recommendation, but the recommendation would be to, um...
Adopt the proposed changes to the transportation element of the Comprehensive Plan?
Yeah. Simply stated, yeah.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion, uh, to adopt, adopt the proposed changes as presented by staff to the transportation element of the Comprehensive Plan.
I'll second that.
Oh, yeah.
We have a first motion by Commissioner Maddox and a second by Commissioner Penno. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 All opposed?
Aye.
So we have everyone in favor, and the motion carries.
Were you in favor or against, Joe?
He was in favor. He was an aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you. Again, I apologize. It's...
I'm used to frazzled.
Okay, I guess your internet working is a bit better use this, but you will keep that. So I've put it to the Planning Commission page.
Thanks.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
So onto the second item. Is, John, you okay with that? Onto the second item?
Do you go home now?
As long as the Planning Commission's all right with it, I am.
Okay, so... Go ahead.
I'm going to recuse myself from this public hearing due to a conflict of interest with the school board.
Okay, so noted.
You, you don't need to leave.
I think I'm supposed to actually leave the chamber.
You're welcome to, but, um, we would like you back for the other item.
Oh, I'm, I'm just gonna be checking email outside Amy's.
Okay. Last time, last time you took off, so I was like...
Well, last, last time I, I didn't get called back in before.
So Commissioner Johnson has recused himself for this second item, which is Updates to the Capital Facilities Element of the Cedro-Woolley Comprehensive Plan to Address School Capital Facilities Plan and School Impact Fees. John, would you like to do an introduction before I open the public portion of this?
Uh, yeah, and I guess since I think all the planning commissioners were here at the last meeting that are present.
Always are not.
And so then hopefully the Planning Commission members that weren't here read up all about it, so I don't have to read this all over again, but, no, I'm kidding. The, uh, so this is, uh, Proposed Updates to the, the Cedro-Woolley Capital Facility Plan to Incorporate the Newly Adopted Cedro-Woolley School District Capital Facility Plan. In that capital facility plan, done by the school district's capital facility plan, they talk about their, uh, their school impact fee calculations and updates to their capital facilities needs and plans to accommodate those needs over the next, uh, so many years. The, um... Per, per the, the, the way the, uh, the state laws require, we, we adopt the, the capital facility into our plan, and then we adopt into our municipal code their impact fee schedule based on, uh, their capital facilities plan. Their last one was adopted, uh, in April 2016, so it's getting, getting time to, uh, update it. And as you can see, the, uh, impact fees actually went up significantly from, uh, single-family houses are currently 1,600 roughly per unit. And that figure is going up to...
Forty-four sixty-one.
Forty-four sixty-one per single-family residence, and 2,888 for multifamily residences, units, which is currently only 847. Um, I do remember their old calculations were based on, uh, information from a slow period where there was no, uh, multifamily housing, so they didn't have good data in to create those numbers. Now they've got better data, and the numbers reflect it better. As I mentioned in the memo, there's not really much the city can do as far as altering the amount requested, because the calculations are in their capital facilities plan, which has been adopted by the Cedro-Woolley School District. Um, it's, so it's, it's not ours to, to necessarily, to, to change those numbers, so we don't have the ability to recommend a lower number or anything like that. The changes themselves are gonna happen to, as I mentioned, the capital facilities plan. Basically, we're gonna swap out, um, the, the appendix, uh, in the capital, our, our capital facilities plan that has their old plan and put in the new plan. There's no other changes that need to happen to the rest of the capital facilities element or the comprehensive plan anywhere else. Um, we will also need to update the Municipal Code, Chapter 1564, to incorporate the new numbers as adopted. So what the Planning Commission is, or what the Planning Department has recommended is that the Planning Commission make a recommendation, uh, for the, uh... I didn't write a recommendation in here either. Sorry, guys.
I have one in mine. It's on page...
Oh, that's right. I'm looking at the old one. I gave my new one away to Joe. So there's a recommendation there under recommendations, and we're recommending adoption of, uh, adoption of the capital facilities, the school district capital facilities plan, and, uh, amending our municipal code to adopt the new school impact fees as proposed by the school district. That's it. That's all I got.
So before we discuss it, let me open up the public portion of it, okay? Then we'll close it and discuss, okay? So at 6:49, we will open up the public portion of the item number two, Updates to the Capital Facilities Element of the Cedro-Woolley Comprehensive Plan to Address School Capital Facilities Plan and School Impact Fees, File Number CPA 2-22. Are there any members of the audience that would like to comment? Clearly, there is not. Is there anyone online that would like to comment on the, on item number two? Go in once, twice. We will close the public hearing on item number two at 6:50 PM. Now it's open for discussion amongst the Planning Commission members. Commissioner Penno? I thought you said you, you had something on page five, or?
Oh, that was, I was just saying where the recommendation was.
Oh.
So just to clarify, John, uh, we are, we don't have any control over the content of this. We can only recommend to approve it or to reject it. Is that...
Yeah, and if you're gonna re- make recommendations to reject, obviously you'd need to provide detailed information of what the objections are to. So that would be something that would come up during the discussion period, I presume.
Sure.
Would anyone like to make a motion to recommend?
I'll move to recommend that, uh, the City Council adopt the proposed amendments to incorporate the 2022 Cedro-Woolley School District Capital Facilities Plan into the Cedro-Woolley Capital Facilities Element and make amendments to Chapter 1564 Cedro-Woolley Municipal Code to incorporate the school district's updated school impact fees.
Commissioner Freiberger has made that motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Penno. All in favor, say aye.
Just as a point of order, there should be an opportunity for further discussion after the motion's been made and seconded.
Okay, would you like to, go ahead.
And I don't actually have any further discussion on this matter, but, uh, just as a procedural order, point of order. There, so before the, before a vote is called, there should be an opportunity presented for further discussion.
Everybody is so silent, so I just really expect you to speak up, and I don't know, and that's why I'm asking. So if you have something additional to add to it...
I, I don't.
I would really appreciate that you speak up. I, I just don't know. I can't read minds.
So Joe, there, procedurally, the, the chair off, the chair does say after the motion, there, is there any discussion on the motion? And then move on for, and ask of, uh, if there's no acknowledgement of, uh, discussion, requests for discussion.
I apologize. I will work on my Roberts rules of order.
Yeah, because technically, uh, we shouldn't be discuss, like, we can have general discussion about the topic, but there should be an op, an opportunity given for specific discussion of the motion.
Okay.
After the motion's been made and seconded. That's... Anyway, that's the correct procedural technique.
Okay, would you, would you like me to start this over again, or what, what's your...
No.
It's, it's fine. He's just pointing out a point of order in that.
Okay.
No big deal.
Yep.
So the motion carries?
Well, now we can call for, now we can call for a vote.
Okay, so we have a first and second motion to approve. Aye or nay?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Joe?
Nay.
Okay, so we have a four-two-one, aye, one nay. Commissioner Fournette does not agree. Motion still carries.
Just as another point of order, do we have a quorum right now with?
Yeah.
Commissioner Johnson recused?
Yeah, we need, so there's a, there's seven on the commission, so a quorum would be, uh, you know, a majority of that. So quorum would be four.
Four.
So we have five with Commissioner Johnson missing. And so, uh, yes, we have quorum plus one.
Welcome back. Okay, we would like to move on to unfinished business, and I believe, uh, Nicole, well, she's not here. Is there anything you would like to, uh, add into the... April 19th, 2022 Amendments to the Design Review Standards and Guidelines to Address Building Modifications in the Central Business District? John?
All right. So, um, we had a pretty good discussion about some very specific items, that Nicole put in the staff memo, including a discussion of Mullians versus, um, Muntons. And as Commissioner Fournette pointed out from his book, that there, there was some question about whether we had it accurate. So, uh, to, to search that out, we looked at lots of architectural standards books. And unfortunately, Commissioner Fournette, it looks like your book might be wrong, which is kind of confusing and surprising, but, because, uh, the vast majority of the research shows that the way it was, uh, shown in the staff memo was, was indeed accurate, so... That's what, that's...
Why, why did you, why did you, uh, change, why did you change the photo then?
Did she not put the right photo back in?
No, she, she re, she made it, uh, switched over from the Mutton in the middle to Mullion in the middle.
Mutton in the middle. Let's see, where are we at?
I could, I gave Commissioner Fatizzi my copy, so I have to...
Yeah.
I have to look. Are you done with it? Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, so it looks like we have to correct the, the drawing. What had happened is she just went ahead and changed it, and I said, "Did you research it on the internet?" Or did you just do what, uh... Do what was just, just, just change it as was discussed as possible? And she, she had just changed it, and then she had to change it back when we did the research and found out that indeed, uh, the previous one was correct. So, yeah, we'll need to, we'll need to amend that, uh, photo.
And then the words too, because the words, last month, the words weren't matching the photo. Now you've got the words matching the photo, but if she changes the photo back, then the words will be wrong.
I think the words are right.
We, we believe the words are right, but what does the rest of the Planning Commission say?
Are we talking about on page...
Twenty-one.
So in the last page?
Back into the last page. I don't seem to have page numbers online, but yeah, it's on, under these definitions, right?
Right there.
Mutton versus Mullion. It's my understanding that a Mullion is a... So are we saying that the, that the definitions are correct now, but the...
The picture is wrong?
The picture is wrong?
I, I'll have to research that. Nicole did this, and she's unfortunately sick today, and so I don't honestly know what happened.
Okay, if, if you compare last month's to this month's, the words have not changed, but the picture changed. So if the picture is now wrong, then the... It's, it's pretty simple. You just gotta, you just gotta match your photo to what you got written there. In other words, last month, you said... In other words, last month, you said a Mullian is a slender vertical member in, in the middle, but you have Mutton written there. This month, you have the same wording, and you've got the photo matching the wording, which is good. If you change it back, then it's wrong again.
So what, if this is the only problem, let's, let's, we'll just, we'll just make sure it's right in the final, in the final. And if the Plan, if the Planning Commission reviews the rest of this and is okay with the way it is, then we would ask that we just, staff make it right and, and, and approve the rest of it. So we'd be asking for an approval of, of this draft with the correction of, of that. Either words or, either words or, and/or picture.
Okay, to me, it's right now. That part.
Anyone else?
Well, moving on, so the, the bigger issue that the Planning Commission talked about was basically the three quadrants of the Central Business District, and how building heights, well, building roofline should look in those three quadrants. And one of the, one of the significant factors in that was building height. So I think we are all, the Planning Commission was all on the same page that in the Central Business District, we wanted flat roofs with parapets. In the entry areas on Metcalf State and Ferry Street, West Ferry Street, the Planning Commission had some different ideas. They wanted to see some more flexibility in rooflines. And then in the, all the other areas, which are sort of pseudo-residential and just not the main downtown area, the Planning Commission was okay with the various roofline forms and heights. So hopefully, that was captured in the early part of this. There are no page numbers, but under the standards section on page one, two, three, four, five, six, the sixth page in of the memo, the number seven, eight, and nine are the ones that we're talking about. And then there is also a, a street lighting issue and streetscaping issue that we'll bring up later. But staff recommends that the Planning Commission review the seven, eight, and nine, and make sure that it's written in such a way that it reflects what you envision for those various sectors of the Central Business District.
Any discussion?
They look good to me.
It looks pretty good to me. I just wanted a point of clarification, I guess, on number eight. It doesn't quite repeat what number seven says about the, you can have alternative roof forms if you have a parapet. So in this case, it's either flat with parapet or shed with the eaves on the street.
I don't think this is right at all. What I'm seeing is, so in the area bounded by the tracks to the west, we'll start with seven. So that's the area bounded by the tracks to the west, Pughes to the east, tracks to the north, and Warner to the south. That's the, of the blue line that we're always talking about, which more or less makes up our, the historic downtown, all those.
Now, the tracks to the north, is that?
The old, former tracks, Northern Street, basically.
So Northern Street, but we should clarify that, because there are no tracks there. To me, the tracks to the north is along. Right over there, right? I mean.
Well, there is, there's no, the tracks don't run east-west anywhere besides that area. So I could say Northern Street. And when it jogs to the other side of the street over there by the bowling alley, it doesn't really have a name. It's been called various things throughout history, but there's nothing addressed down there. So there's not really a name to that section.
I mean, I think that's the right boundary, but I, I was, I was confused about what you.
We could say the former tracks.
Yeah.
We just throw in former tracks, does that make sense?
I guess, I, I mean, it makes sense to me who lives here, but.
We all live and work here.
Yeah, okay.
I guess we can throw in former tracks. Anyway, so so the idea is, in that blue bound area, blue line bound area, you need a commercial flat roof. And I think that's what number seven says. Shall have traditional commercial flat roofs with parapets, or use parapets to entirely block alternative roof forms. Flat roofs shall include a parapet on all sides of the building visible from the adjacent streets with a cornice or similar architectural feature. Shed roofs are appropriate for subordinate roof forms, such as porches, canopies, and upper floor projections. Okay, I think that's spot on. I think that's what the Planning Commission really wanted to see. So if you're in the downtown historic, you got a flat roof. We even, you know, the, the Pioneer Marketplace even put parapets up to, to block their non-flat roof. It's, it's, you know, from a closer vantage point, it's effective. As you move a couple blocks away, it, it's a big tall roof. It's hard to obscure, but it did, it did a, did wonders to improve the historic feel of that building. Or at least make it fit better in a historic neighborhood. Okay, so then, the next one says, Buildings over two stories in any part of the CBD shall have traditional commercial flat roofs with parapets. I, I, I think that's accurate. Now where we have a problem is or. Because this isn't excluding that area bounded by the blue line. So it's in conflict with the area bounded by, with the rules for those bounded by the blue line. So, you know, what it really needs to say, Buildings in, in any part of the CBD outside the blue line shall have a traditional commercial flat roofs with parapets, or may have shed roofs with a minimum of three-foot eve on the street-facing side. Flat roofs shall include a parapet on all sides of the building and visible from the adjacent store, streets with a cornice or similar architectural feature. Shed roofs are appropriate for subordinate roof forms, such as porches, canopies, upper floor projections. So what that is saying is that if you got a two-story building, and you're outside the blue line, you gotta have, you gotta have a flat roof with parapets, or, or some shed roof is a pair, is, is allowed. That's what we were envisioning for our entryways along the streets, along the main streets. Is that everything okay, Eric?
Mm-hmm.
Am I misremembering? Because I, I thought that we were talking about the height, how once you're high enough over two stories, then it doesn't matter as much, because from the ground, you know, having a shed roof. But was that only outside the, that core area? Or, that's what you're saying, is that it's missing a line that says?
So what we're trying to say is, everything in the CBD regardless of the height. And in, in the core area
Okay.
is gonna have a flat roof with parapets.
Okay, I misremembered.
Then we're gonna move on to other parts of the, or other parts of the CBD. And I, I'm gonna lean on the Planning Commission to see how, how they wanna do it. So I, maybe I'm misremembering, and I, and it's very well possible. I was, was the discussion around the fact that you wanted to allow various roof forms when it's three, when it's three stories and not in the historic part?
Personally, I think that makes sense. I wasn't here for the discussion last month, but I think shed roofs are appropriate. I mean, if we look at the new library, that's a very attractive building with, I guess that's technically not a.
It's not three stories.
It's not three stories, but it's also not, is it technically a shed roof? Or I'm trying to think, I, might be.
It's kind of a hybrid, it's not a peak roof.
Yeah, it's almost got a gable on it, right? Or one.
No, it's, it's two shed roofs.
That go like that.
That, yeah.
Anyway, my point is, that's a very attractive building. And I, I notice here in the lower one-story buildings, but, but technically, parts of that are as tall as a two-story building. I mean, it's a big, tall, commercial, you know, it's a very tall one-story building. So I don't know, I, I think that, I think that eight is good, maybe except for your caveat about not applying to buildings within the blue line. Right? So buildings over two stories have the option for a shed roof, as long as it's got sufficient overhangs.
And that's just for over two stories?
For over two stories.
That means three, four stories.
Oh, so that's, that's not two stories or more, that's?
It, well, it, it can be, it says, it says over two stories.
And then number nine is two stories or less, okay. Yep.
You know, there's such a mix of structures down there right now. How does this affect the people that are in residential units down there? There's a lot of houses outside of the blue line. Let's say somebody wants to do a remodel and do something different. Are they now gonna be bound to a totally different set of rules? I mean, how does somebody interpret what we're trying to do here?
So I was under the impression that this was going to have three sectors. One, the one, historic downtown. Two, the main drags, the three main drags in and out of town. And four, kinda everything outside of that, which is kind of these residential, slightly residential neighborhood streets that, that, you know, are gonna be single-story and maybe two-story.
Right.
We're gonna have less, I thought it was kinda all bets are off on that in that area. Unless, of course, they tried to go three-story, and then we wanted to make it look more like a commercial building, not just a residential building.
But you can't rebuild a residential building in one of those areas, correct?
Well, yeah, you can. So the way the CBD rules are, is in the areas that are not in the historic area and are not on State Street, Ferry Street, or Metcalf Street, you're allowed to have duplexes, triplexes, and fourplexes. So the idea was, on these streets that are in the CBD but not on the main drags, you're, you can have, you can, you can have higher-density residential, but not, you know, this is, this is the classic missing middle. You know, we're trying to incorporate some higher density in the downtown without, in the periphery of the downtown, without making it big apartment buildings all around. And, and that, then the scale goes from, you know, the residential area, the, the street residential, our seven areas on the, outside of the CBD could then blend to the missing middle duplex, triplex, fourplex, and then into our historic downtown, which is denser and taller. That was the idea. And honestly, with those missing middle-type houses, you get more people in your central business district area that can walk and shop, walk and shop at the various places downtown, encouraging more development in our central business district, which is also the whole idea of why we're encouraging high-density residential in the central business district above commercial. The idea of bringing more people into our downtown, making it more viable for commercial enterprise.
So we're so number eight relates to buildings outside of the blue line generally. And then.
And over two stories.
And over two stor, uh, three stories or greater.
Correct, yeah. So how about?
I would think, in my, it, it would make it more clear for me if it said three stories or greater. Or if there, or if there was a height limit. Because two stories is pretty vague. I mean, you know, if you have, you could have a building that's 25 feet tall, and it's all just one floor.
Well, this also captures, you know, somebody who's doing something like a mezzanine area. It would be over two stories, right? Even per building code.
So, sure, I mean, that, maybe that's the right way, and I'm just slow to catch up. But I don't know if, does it have more to do with the ultimate height of the building, or how many floors happen to be inside of it? Like, is it buildings over 30 feet tall that we're worried about? Or is it buildings that are two, two-story? I mean, you know what I was.
Well, the idea is, yeah, the taller you get, the, the, the more, the roofline matters. And so, yes, if you have a, I hate to use the example across the street, like, those are two stories with a mezzanine, more or less. I mean, you can call them three stories or two stories, yeah.
Yeah, they're two stories with a loft.
Yeah, so would those be regulated as a two-story or as a three-story?
Well, that's, that's my point exactly. I think that ultimately, the height of the building is more important than how many floors are inside of it.
Right, I agree.
There's portions of the library building that are about as tall as Abbott's Alley, and that's only a one-story building.
Right, so are you suggesting that maybe we put like over 20 feet?
Or 25 feet or 30 feet, I don't know what the number is, but yeah.
Well, you know, 25 is a pretty good number, because you get a 13-foot commercial downstairs, and then 10-foot a residential above. And that gets you at a, that gets you at a 25-foot roofline.
Sure.
That's, 13 feet's a pretty typical commercial space in it, in downstairs.
I'm thinking of other things too, back to the number of stories. Because you're right, if you have a commercial, let's say, personnel logging trucks or something big industrial, that you have a 15-foot commercial door, and then something on top of that, you can usually push over 30-plus feet.
Now, in theory, that's not allowed in the CBD. But your point's well taken, like, maybe the, you know, two really tall stories makes it. So do we just say?
I was just thinking of a large, large roll-up doors for, for whatever. I mean, whether you're putting a camper in there, or, really doesn't matter, right?
Yeah, I mean, maybe it's just some grand, clear-story situation. But I, I guess, yeah, I, so I think we're on the same page, is that maybe the height, the ultimate height, maybe 25 feet's the magic number, is more important than, or a more accurate way to break this up than. break this up than how many floors.
Yeah. It, it could be a tomatoes-to-matoes situation, because, you know, if you get a funky roof line, who's to tell where 25 feet is? But, I mean, so it's not always, it's not always easy to regulate height either, is the same way it's not always easy to regulate by stories. So it's kind of a double-edged sword, I guess is what I'm saying. It could go both ways.
Well, don't you just say the highest point? For the roof?
Not building code. You say average, average peak, average, average of the roof peaked, peaked eve.
Would it be possible to do...
And that's, sorry. Go ahead.
Would it be possible to do something in between buildings over two stories or 25 feet, whichever is greater, something like that? Or would that not be?
Is that what the planning commission wants to do?
I'm just throwing that out there.
No, I mean, I'm fine with whatever.
Yeah, but I've seen that too, and that kinda makes, that makes sense though.
You're also the one who has to enforce it, though, and so...
That actually gives, that actually gives me more tools.
Okay. Yeah, I think that's fine, then. I'm, I'm happy with that.
I like that as well. So as...
Good suggestion. Thank you.
Say that eight would say buildings over two stories or 25 feet in height, correct? Or say 26 feet in height?
We'll say 25 is pretty typical.
Okay.
And, and no, we'd be measuring...
So then buildings of two stories or less than 25 feet?
I mean, we could spec, actually, this is outside of the building code and outside of the zoning code, so we could say peak of 25 feet. I mean, peak of 25 feet's not all that high, to be honest with you. That's...
But if it's a low-pitched shed roof or a flat roof, you can get a commercial story, like you said, and a residential story under 25 feet.
Not at the peak. So, yeah, now we gotta think about the number a little bit. Depends on how big the building is. So if you think of a roof on a, on a garage, you know, you got a 20-foot wide building, and you got a regular peak roof, and like, say, even a steep 612 pitch, you know, that's basically 90 degrees. That's, you know, yay-high. Now, if you're, if you've got a size, a grocery store-sized building and you do that, and my arms don't go long enough, you can see it gets exponentially taller. That's, that's why I was saying regulating the number of feet on a roof line to peak can be very challenging, cause it depends on the size of the building. Speak up, yeah, please.
But in number eight, you're not allowed to have a peak roof anyway. You can have a flat roof with your parapets, or you can have shed roofs, the blah-blah three-feet eve.
You just have to have a three-foot overhang.
So it's not even allowing peaked roofs here in the first place. So in my opinion, number eight needs to just say the buildings over two stories are 25 feet tall, and then change of the CBD and put that it's outside of that blue line area.
Okay. So how's this sound? And I'm gonna change that number to 30, just to allow some run, cause if you've, like I said, if you've got, or some pitch run, cause if you've got, if you have a 13, 13-foot commercial space on the downstairs floor, then you've got a, at least a foot of rim. So now you're at 14 feet, and then you got nine-foot, nine-foot ceilings in the residential up above. Now you're at, I've lost count.
23.
23.
You need two feet.
Now you only get two feet of roof height, like, you know, that's, that's the height of, that's the height of the, you know, it's one foot of that is your, is your height for the, for the shed roof, which would be some sort of eye joist or something, which would be at least a foot. Yours are 18 inches, I believe, probably.
Something like that. They're probably two feet.
So over two stories or 30 feet?
So 30 feet gives you better, yeah. So how about...
I think that the point of this is, is we don't want like a gable or hip roof that is on, we don't want a grocery store that's one-story with a 612 gable roof on it.
And all you see is roof line from here to Burlington.
And so as long as, they can have a gable roof as long as it's under 30 feet to the peak.
Well, the way it's written is shed, what's, and you, and the planning commission seemed to like that, so...
Which is, I think a shed roof has a much more commercial look to it, right?
Do, does the planning commission, sorry to run you over there. The question really comes down to, on your, on our entryway along Ferry Street, like, that's gonna be redeveloped, whether it's in the next few years or however, that's gonna be redeveloped. Someone's gonna do a massive project, probably. Do you want gable roofs along that line? Or do we want flat roofs and, and shed roofs?
Yes.
I see a lot of nodding, flat roofs and shed roofs. So let's try this out for size. In that area, buildings over two stories, outside of the historic CBD, buildings over two stories...
Or 30 feet, right?
Or 30 feet maximum at peak in any part of the CBD outside of the historic blue lines, and I'll put the, you know, those bounds, shall have traditional flat roofs with parapets or may have shed roof with a minimum of a three-foot eve on, three-feet eve on the street-facing side. Does that sound about right?
Yes.
I think we're there.
Yep.
And that is west of the blue line. We're talking specifically west Ferry and west State.
Saying outside of the blue line. And so technically, if anybody wants to build a three-story building across the street from us here on, on Monroe Street, where there's currently a little single-family home, they'd have to follow these standards.
Which they shouldn't have any problem with that. Cause all, all it asks them to do is put shed roofs on it and meet these other design standards, right? Or, I mean, it...
So that's three-foot, that's, that's over two stories, so that's, so that's a, well, that's, no, so actually what that means is two, what we mean if it's, we're doing 30 peak, it's over one story. So that'd be, I could say two stories or more. How about that? I know you like that better.
All I care about is the 30 feet.
And do we need to say whichever is greater or specify that? Or is it, is it specific enough without that?
Whichever is lower?
Yeah. Either way.
Building two stories or 30 feet maximum at peak, whichever is lower, in any part of the CBD outside of the blue line, shall have traditional commercial flat roofs with parapets or may have shed roofs with a minimum of three-foot eve on the street-facing side. So now two-story buildings are allowed, two stories, two stories to 30 feet are allowed to have. I'm killing you guys, I'm sorry.
I think you're, I think we're really close on that one.
Yeah, you went down again. So you're still in eight, right? So buildings over two stories or 30 feet or more?
We were down at nine, talking two stories and, or 30 feet.
No, we're eight.
We're at eight.
We're still in eight, right?
I know, we're on eight, yeah.
We're still in eight. Buildings over two stories.
Or 30 feet.
Or 30 feet.
Or 30 feet at peak.
Outside of the...
Whichever is higher.
Historic district area.
Yeah.
But, no, whichever is lower still. Whichever is lower.
But we're doing over two stories.
Yeah.
Lower.
Yeah, but we capture both.
But that's in nine, the lower one. Oh, okay, I see what you're saying.
If it's a three-story building that only has seven-foot high ceilings...
It's still, yeah, it's still a two-story, it's over two stories, so it's gonna meet these.
Yeah.
The idea is, we're trying to, the idea is, if you're three stories, we wanna give you some options.
Uh-huh.
Three stories or higher, we wanna give you the shed roof option.
So maybe what's really confusing here is then eight is talking about over two stories, and then you go to nine and it's talking about less than two stories, but they're talking about two different areas. So both of them are written incorrectly in the beginning.
So we're gonna get to nine and fix nine next.
Okay.
No, I agree, nine's wrong, and we may need a 10 to, also. So we're, I'm trying to just tackle one issue at a time. So we're talking about three stories or, you know, over two stories or over 30 feet is gonna need to have shed roof or flat, period.
Yep.
I mean, that's what we're trying to say.
Easy.
Yes. Done.
Maybe we should just write that. Buildings over two stories or more than 30 feet, outside of the blue line area, shall have traditional commercial flat roofs or parapets.
Perfect.
Are we ready to...
Move on to nine?
Well, can I ask a question about this section of standards in general? Does this apply, so like going to number one and looking at brick shall be the dominant material featured pedestrian-level, street-facing facades in multi-story buildings? Does that, is that in the entire CBD?
Yes.
So if somebody is building a duplex in the outskirts of the CBD, it must be, have dominant material pedestrian-level on street-facing facades of brick?
That's the way it is written, and I believe that's actually just pulled from the existing Just moved around. Like, we just restructured it because it wasn't written.
I mean, my, my recollection of our discussion previously was that, like, it was very important to have brick in like the, within the blue line, but not necessarily everywhere. And maybe even on like Ferry Street, the entrance streets and stuff like that. But like, it's, it's clearly not part of the design guidelines currently, because there's been plenty of buildings built in the CBD that are not made of brick.
So, you know, staff has some ability to take it easy on design guidelines on things that are not in the CBD, or not in the main drag.
Sure.
And maybe it wasn't in there, I just honestly don't recall. We've beat this thing up so, so long, and I just don't remember. The original memo has the, of course, the stuff that's still adopted has the original But I'd have to read through it all to find it, so I'm not gonna do that.
I, I don't, I guess I would suggest that brick being the dominant material featured at pedestrian level on the first and second floors is absolutely appropriate within the blue line.
On the main drags.
And on the main drags, but maybe not within the CBD as a whole. But I, I might get overruled on that, I don't know. But I, I don't think that if, if we're gonna allow people to build duplexes and triplexes in the more residential areas of the CBD, I'm not sure they need to be brick. Especially if we have any like interest in preserving some sort of notion of building affordable housing in this town.
So, so let me ask you this. Do we wanna get done with the roofs first and then move on to that? Cause that's totally...
We can.
Cause, cause you make a good point. If you're gonna go residential, it's gonna be totally different design, it'll probably be under 25 feet or, even if it's two stories, you're gonna have different northwest styles. There's, there's so many different ways to produce some kind of desirable product that somebody's gonna wanna live in. But at this particular point, why don't we just stick to finishing up the roofs and then move on to that?
And there might be a simple fix. Maybe we just need to specify commercial versus residential.
I've got some ideas, so, but...
Okay.
Let's do nine.
Let's finish up.
Thank you. And the discussion on nine was that the library was given as the primary example of this, to allow different roof styles, two stories or less.
So what this says is, buildings outside of the historical area can have traditional flat roofs or shed roofs with at least two-foot eve, or gabled or hipped roofs with a decent pitch with eaves. But this doesn't, you know, so what that means is, if you're under, if you're two stories or less, or 30 feet...
Less than 30 feet.
Or less than 30 feet. Can have pretty much any roof form. We put a, but we put some bounds on it. Eight to 12 with a max slope, which is really steep. What is yours? Yours is 12, like, 12 to 12, isn't it?
12 is my house, yeah.
Which...
Is almost more of a historical look than a much lower pitched roof, you know, like, if we wanna maintain a historic flavor. Nobody's building 12-12 pitches really in the modern era, but...
You end up with a really tall gable. Just more wood.
I'm not wild about this, honestly. I don't think that a gable, I don't think a low-pitched gable roof or hip roof is necessarily what we want. I think, you know, there's always maybe an exception, but you're gonna end up, you know, when you get into like the 412 pitch sort of gable roof, it ends up looking like a manufactured home or some sort of, what a, I mean, that's just like the cheapest trusses you can buy, sort of. It... Sort of, i- 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 you know, rarely is there a commercial situation with a roof like that unless it's got a false front on it or some sort of parapet situation or whatever. And so, um, once again, it, it might be able to be done well, but the typical example of a low pitched gabled roof is not that attractive.
Would it be easier just to put what we don't want instead of trying to define every possible option, just to say, hey, this is what you can't do, and then, uh, pretty much everything else would be open.
No bad-looking buildings allowed.
I appreciate, I appreciate both of your points, cause this is getting wordy, so you can do this, this or this.
Right, right, that's what I'm saying, to say what you can't do.
And saying what you can't do is, you know, sometimes easier. But there's so many things, there might be a lot of things we don't want to see also.
Right, so, you know, we, we had that discussion about manufactured homes and the roof lines and, and things like that in the past, so that would be a starting point of what we don't want, right? And how many other things wouldn't we not want? I mean, we wouldn't want somebody doing something like Disneyland or something that insane, but what could you actually think of as far as options that are, are dead on arrival versus trying to define all different styles that's a two-story or under? I mean, I could think of just so many different options that I see on the residential side, people do all kinds of creative, modern looking kinda things, cause that's what they think is an attractive and appealing, uh, structure. But, uh, on something like this, it's like, we can kill roofs till cows come home, really.
Honestly, I think there's probably as many that we don't want as we do.
We do want, yeah.
So, I'm confused as to how we even got gabled and hipped roofs in this area in the first place, I say just strike that whole line.
Uh, so, the, the idea was, these are the residential areas where we're trying to take it easier on people and allow.
But when you read the definition of the areas bordered by the tra- it's still just showing right outside the blue line, it's, we, I thought we were trying to do a tiered, we had blue line inside there, everything had to stay the way we've talked. Then I thought we were gonna do kind of a move it out kinda situation. So, to me, it sounds like eight and nine are both in the same place, you're just talking about one that's taller and one that's shorter.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I think nine's not written right.
Well, I've said that three times now.
The, the defined, I think the defined area is wrong.
Okay.
I think where, where nine is going is really intended for two-story buildings outside of the, the main drags and outside of the blue line. That really seems like what this is, it's kinda like, who cares what their roof line is? And I appreciate Commissioner Maddox's point of lower than an eight, twelve pitch encourages manufactured home looking pitches, so. There are things needed to be fixed here, so what I would recommend is, we say, buildings of two stories or less outside of the areas bordered by the tracks to the west, Puget Street to the, uh, just make it outside of the blue line and outside of the, the main drags. And then, all bets are off on the roofs, and instead of saying, uh, max pitch of eight, twelve, say a minimum pitch of four, twelve, six, twelve?
Probably six, twelve for a gable roof, I think is, a four, twelve is not an attractive gable roof, I mean, not that it couldn't be done well, but, if they want a flatter roof than that, they can have a shed roof or a combination of shed roofs or something, you know, and, and that gives it a more sort of potentially attractive look. And it's not any more expensive to build, I mean, it's technically cheaper probably to build a shed roof, so. I think there should be an exclusion for commercial buildings as well in this. Right, even if it's outside of the blue line, entrance core, like, I think if we're gonna have gabled or hip roofs, they should be residential buildings and not, like, not a one-story commercial building.
Not a one-story.
Right.
So maybe ten is, all commercial, all one-story commercial buildings shall have a flat for, flat roof with parapet.
Or a shed roof.
Or shed roof.
I was actually, again, suggesting the same exact thing, so, I like it.
Yeah, and that way, that way they have a more commercial feel.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, there's that, uh, on La Venture going into Mount Vernon, there's that new building, I don't know what it's gonna be, it's like bright blue or whatever, but I'm not maybe crazy about the color, but the roof line looks nice and it's got a shed roof, it's a one, it's probably gonna be a dentist office or some, I don't know what it's gonna be, but overall, the shape of that building is nice. John, you smiled, do you, do you know the one I'm talking about?
No, uh, when people say that building in, or something happening in Mount Vernon or Burlington, I say, I don't go to Mount Vernon.
Oh, cause you, you just go to Bellingham North, right?
I thought you were laughing about the color, the blue didn't work.
Don't we, don't we already have somewhere that if it's a commercial building, it has to have a flat roof?
Well, what we're talking, uh, no.
Oh, okay.
I don't think so.
Yeah, so I think there should be a, a number ten that says, all commercial buildings regardless of height should have a flat roof with parapets or whatever, or.
All commercial buildings.
Or a shed roof.
All strict, all, commercial buildings with no residential.
Right, with no residential.
Is that, is that what we're go- going in for here?
There, there's a difference.
Cause I mean, if you, I mean, it's a commercial building if you've got commercial on the main floor and apartment on the second floor.
Well, then it's not a one-story, so why would it make a difference?
Bumping up into number eight with our,
Yeah.
if they can keep it under twenty-five feet, or keep it under thirty feet and still they can put a gable roof on it.
That was the planning commission thing.
I mean, I, I think I would kinda, I think I would kinda lean towards any commercial and/or mixed commercial buildings would be excluded.
Must have a flatter shed roof.
Mm-hmm. I mean, and part of the reason, I mean, the, Joe's point is well taken on the, the wordiness and, you know, I, I think part of the reason why we do have to be wordy here is, you know, we are going for a general, specific look within this area. I think that's the, the optimum desire both of the community and, and of the council, and so trying to keep some semblance of a, a consistent historical, traditional look of the CBD area is probably what we need to have fairly well-defined, particularly around commercial buildings.
We have an example of one that just went in on Ferry Street, that's like commercial on the ground floor and has a hip, gable roof situation. And that's what we're trying to avoid. Right, and it's.
Also has a parapet.
Also has a parapet, yeah.
Does it?
Yeah, uh huh.
On one side.
On one side. It's terrible.
Sat on the market for a while, too.
So, I, I would like to point out, I know this is getting confusing and you guys are probably getting a little conf- a little, um, tired, frustrated, maybe. But you, the planning commission is literally doing the work of what other jurisdictions pay,
Consultants.
Consultant company.
Then I wanna raise.
Tens of thousands of dollars to do, so I really commend you for working so hard on and paying attention to the details, cause it's not easy stuff. You're, you're doing a lot of hard work of envisioning what your community looks like, and that's really important stuff, right? Like, you see stuff happen in town, you're like, I don't wanna see that happen, you hear your friends say like, who let that go in? You have the opportunity to really shape that, so, I, I, the council appreciates it, they say it all the time, how appreciative of the hard work that the planning commission puts into all of the projects that they do. They always say, you know, uh, you know, like, tell the planning commission thanks for me, so, I, I try to do that for them, and, uh, this is hard work, and you're, you're, you're doing a great job, and I'm sorry if, you know, we let you down and didn't have it quite the way you wanted to, and it looks like we've got a little bit more to do on, on the roof thing, I think I've got a pretty good idea now. I'm happy to keep talking about this issue, I just wanted to give you a little break.
Yeah, but, we've had enough of discussion, I think we can move on, but when, when you think about what the discussion here was, also think about what we don't want. We had enough of discussion on what is not desirable, different roof pitches and just different, uh, potential designs that, uh, should not be included in here, and I think that might start lowering the amount of, uh, things you really need to worry about as far as when we do propose updates to the code, right? We know what we don't want. At least, I think I know what I don't want, I think Stacy's pretty clear as things that she doesn't want, and, uh, Commissioner Maddox is pretty clear and actually very, more knowledgeable than probably everybody here as far as roofs go, so, uh.
So, um, I think, you know, it sounds like the planning commission's kinda wrapped up on the roof line thing. Uh, we did bring up the brick shall be dominant material featured on pedestrian level, at the pedestrian level on street-facing facades.
We're on ten now.
In multi-story buildings, fifty percent or more of the front facade on the first and second floors shall incorporate brick. If step back is included, on the second floor, the usage of brick may be reduced to no less than thirty percent. I can, based on what I think, I heard the planning commission saying, trying to circumvent a long conversation about it, let's see if I can just throw something together on, on the fly. Outside of the blue line and not on, uh, State Street, Ferry Street, or Metcalf Street, this, this, uh, standard does not apply on residential-only buildings.
Yeah, and I mean, I think, definitely on residential buildings, but even on commercial buildings outside of that line, I think that as long as they meet the other design standards and have, you know, appropriate roof lines and things like that, I think there could be an, an argument made that they could incorp- they could utilize different materials, I, I don't know. I mean, I think that.
I'm looking at the planning commission on more feedback on that.
I agree, if it's outside of our, our, what we're calling kind of our historic district and those main thoroughfares there, I, I don't feel that, that needs to have the brick.
Any more votes, brick or no brick on, on, now residential or commercial? Does it matter?
I don't think it matters. I agree.
We're talking strictly outside of blue line and main thoroughfares?
Yeah.
Correct. Yeah.
So, you're gonna say, outside of blue line and off of State Street, Ferry Street, and Metcalf Street, this standard does not apply?
Yeah.
Correct.
Done.
Sure.
Yeah, that makes that one easy.
I'm looking for a fight and not getting one, all right, great. That was easy, great, thank you. That leaves us with the, the changes in here, and I apologize, I don't remember where they are, cause I didn't write them. There was some new language added about, uh, streetscapes, lighting, and trees.
So it's on page twelve going into thirteen?
The streetscape lighting?
Oh, sorry, wrong, that was signage, uh, CBD signage, wrong, wrong.
Fourteen of nineteen I got.
Yeah.
Yeah, fourteen, fifteen.
Does it start with streetscape lighting?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And if the planning commission didn't have a chance to look at this thoroughly, then I don't know if we can have a good conversation about it, so, um, it looks like we're gonna have to bring this back, and I'll, I'll do a public hearing on it next time, and hopefully that'll be our final whack at it. But let's, let's look at this, uh, streetscape lighting stuff.
Can I make a suggestion?
Go ahead.
Many, many times in here, I read areas bordered by the tracks, Puget Sound, east-west tracks, Warner Street, South Properties, front of Metcalf, West Par- can we just put the different districts in the definitions? Where you can just use simple terminology like CBD or blue line or historic area and just have it described in the definitions once, so you don't have to keep describing it?
I would love to do that, thank you, good idea.
So technically, we have the historic down, like the historic district downtown, which is what we've been calling the blue line, but then we also have a, a sector that includes the main thoroughfares in and out of the historic downtown, right?
Yeah, so.
And then the rest of everything.
So, what I, so, yeah, so, for a lack of better words, I, I, to, to address what Commissioner Fennett's saying, I'm gonna recommend three sectors, so, sector one is the traditional blue line area, the, the historic downtown area, and that's, you know, we all know what that is. Sector two would be, um, the Metc- would be Metcalf north of downtown, west Ferry Street, you know, west out of downtown, and State Street all the way through downtown, that when it's not in the CBD. Not in the sect- in sector one. And then sector three would be everything else that's really, just those residential streets that fall outside of that. Now, sector one, two, and three sounds a little bit too sci-fi for, uh, design standards, so, I don't know, do you guys got some, uh, pretty planning words you wanna call it instead?
I think historic downtown is sector one.
Yes.
Yeah, I agree. Main thorough, main historical streets could be sector two or whatever.
And the hinterlands. Be sector three.
And sec- sector three is the hinterlands. Whatever, the surrounding, the outer CBD.
Oh, I like that. I don't know why, but I do, it's still a little sci-fi. The outer.
Living in the outer CBD.
Outer CBD.
So what do we?
Any other ideas?
What did we come up with for two?
I don't know, maybe it's not as good as I thought immediately, but, any other ideas? Um, as far as main streets, I, can we, uh, oh, I had an idea. That, that, entry streets?
How about arterial CBD, cause that's exactly what they are, right?
There you go.
Or what about just main streets?
The problem with main streets is it's kind of a generic term that, you know, it's hard to, I, I really like it, but as, as I was imagining it written in code, we say main streets, that kind of applies to, maybe, i- it seems to, it could apply to a lot of areas. So, maybe the.
Primary CBD streets or?
The main CBD entry streets?
That's a mouthful, and you can't make an acronym out of it. How about? How about TBD?
Well, I mean, we could go with main streets. And are we okay with outer CBD?
Or just call it secondary CBD versus primary CBD, right? Sector 2, that's primary.
I don't want anybody to feel like they're in a secondary situation.
No.
Oh, you live in secondary CBD.
Of course, when I think of outer CBD, then I think it's the blue line's inner CBD, right? But we already have that. And you don't really wanna have inner. That's not a good.
No.
No.
The historic CBD, the.
I think the historic district, main streets, and then just have a definite, you know, main streets refers in this document to the Ferry, Metcalf.
Surrounding CBD.
And then. Maybe that's all you, maybe you only need those two to determine, defined, and the rest of it is just the rest of it.
Uh, we'll go with historic, historic downtown.
And modern downtown.
That would be the entry streets.
That would be like, yeah. State and.
Contemporary downtown.
Contemporary.
Wow. Commissioner Maddox didn't like that one at all.
Oh, he didn't? I kinda liked it. Darn.
How about historic downtown, main streets, and outer CBD?
For lack of anything else, let's try that for a bit.
All right. I'm gonna bring this back because there's a lot to work on here.
Nicole might have some really good ideas for these names as well.
Yeah, it all comes down to this, too. It's the developers that are gonna be looking at the code. It's not your general residents that's gonna get all caught up on something. Unless somebody's buying and investing in these areas, they just wanna know what they can and can't do. It's really that simple. They could care less what you're calling it.
And we wanna simplify this a little bit, too.
The people that are gonna be looking at this kind of code, they're pretty sophisticated, so.
I'll take a big swing at it, hopefully sooner than later, before I forget what y'all said. And then, so getting back to the streetscape, there was a new standards section on your second, the, the last page there before the definitions start. And, you know, this is kind of significant. The new buildings over 5,000 square feet in the area bordered by the tracks to the west, I think this is gonna be the historic downtown. Yeah, and historic downtown and main streets shall incorporate streetscape lighting. That, that's, that's a big, that's a big ask. New streetscape lighting shall be cohesive with existing adjacent fixtures. Now, what if there are no adjacent, or what if the adjacent ones are bad? I don't know, like. White or clear bulbs are appropriate. Colored lights are prohibited. The height of freestanding light fixtures shall not exceed building height. And wiring connections shall be carefully shielded from view. Freestanding light fixtures shall run connections underground. This sounds like we may have borrowed from somebody else.
So my initial thought on this is if we're gonna ask this, it should only be in the historic downtown, of which there already is a certain amount of.
So the reason this came up was, we're, we're, what we're considering is along Ferry Street in particular, that area that's going to be developed in the long run. Wanted some cohesive lighting down that area.
It was a continuity discussion, that when you, when you're coming down Ferry, anything new going in, it's like a lead-in to where your historic downtown is. And specifically because most of that's vacant right now, whoever's gonna go in there should have the ways and means to accommodate something that is consistent, what it's going into, right?
It really, um, when you think of the pictures you see of Cedron Woolley, the ones that really stand out to you are the photos of the central business district with the lights on. It makes a really nice appearance down the street. I think the idea was recreate that as we enter from Ferry Street, which is presumably gonna be the main portal coming in, as would along here on Metcalf. So we're kicking around the idea of making large developments really foot the bill for putting decorative lighting in the streets. I don't know if it goes far enough to say, you know, decorative, public right-of-way lighting. I don't know if that's clear enough in here. I think we should probably say something like that.
And I think we're, part of the concept, too, is just trying to capitalize on the fact that everything else is fairly well-established. And you had made mention about installation, like on Metcalf would have been difficult, but the fact that that is pretty much a blank canvas for the most part, seizing that opportunity to have that requirement, I believe is how that conversation kind of went.
Right. I mean, the planning commission can require it anywhere. And then the standards start to creep in. Lighting's a little tough as people provide lighting, that, you know, maybe the exact same light standard that they put in front of a 5,000-foot, square-foot development in one spot isn't available 15 years later when the neighbor develops. So you're trying to, they'd be required to keep it cohesive, but there may be problems down the road. I don't wanna point out problems with the egg concept, but we'll just need to recognize that, you know, we're not gonna be able to get it identical. Whereas, yeah, if all of, all of the old Ford dealer develops, you know, they could put it all in at once, and that would, that would be a pretty nice effect. Or we could have them pay, I don't know if we can use our design standards to require them to pay into like a city fund for it. Those city funds kind of peter out and a few bucks sit there for a long time, and then nothing ever happens with it. Unfortunate deal with those because it's a great tool.
Who then is on the hook for maintaining the lights if the lights are on public property?
The city.
So it seems to me that they should, the city should be the ones that install the lights, and the developers, like you said, are in charge of paying, have to like pay into a fund or something to do that. I mean, I don't know, maybe that's, I don't know how that stuff works exactly, but.
You all look tired. I know I'm tired. What do you think? Do you need a break, or do you wanna call it a quit, or?
All of the above? No.
Yeah, but a lot was discussed, refined some pretty important concepts, as well as what's gonna get in place in the future. And you have a whole bunch of things that you need to rework, especially on the roof side. The lighting thing was back to that whole continuity thing, that especially on the, on Ferry, when that's redeveloped, to have a consistency coming on in that when you're coming past a, really would be a huge development that you're coming on in. The right side of the street, that's gonna be a little bit different until you get to the remainder of the Ford, the old Ford dealership property on the, it would go out the south side of the street. But I always thought the lighting was one of the really unique features about this city that is really a very appealing aspect at all times of the year. It doesn't matter, you know, winter, summer, spring, fall.
I like the idea of the city choosing the lighting and the developers pay into a fund, seeing it's our, it's our responsibility, the city, that is.
Well, I mean, we, we take over it in the long run. We're, we're hoping for the, what we're, we're aiming for is the developers to pay into the construction and an installation of the lighting, and then, you know, much like building streets, though when a developer has to build a street in a new subdivision, the city takes it over in the long run. Thus, we're not asking the developer to build any streets. We're asking them to improve the right-of-way by putting in decorative street lighting.
Right. So they can have any lighting they want, as long as it's the ones we choose for them.
Yeah, I mean, it seems like the city would have to put together a list of approved light fixtures because they both have to be compliant with whatever sort of municipal longevity standards are gonna be required for street lighting, right? But then also fit within whatever sort of design parameters that we want.
So it seems like we should have some design parameters set by the planning commission.
Something.
Or are we just, like?
And the design standards.
Is there a light, like, yeah, I mean, it almost seems like there's gotta be, there's probably like five different light fixtures that are the options, or maybe just one light fixture that's the option.
So, uh, none of you were on the planning commission when we did the lighting in front of the Oaks Building. There are hundreds of options. We can narrow it down, you know, by filtering down to cutoff, which means the light only goes down, which we definitely want. We don't want stuff that just shines light sideways and up. So, so you're limited to cutoff. I mean, we could just limit it to acorn style, and we still have dozens of options. And, you know, maybe we say, you know, the, the, the streetlights need to be X amount of high, X, X number of feet high, and a steel pole, as opposed to a concrete pole or a fiberglass pole.
The design guideline route is what we're really good at, and that's really the way to go because five years from now, manufacturing techniques, you might have the easy ability to take a picture of something, ship it off someplace, and it comes back exactly the way you want it. I mean, think of the revolutions we've seen now with 3D printers that you can make any part, whatever. So that's coming our way anyway. So just putting guidelines in and design guidelines, let's not get caught up with where someone buys it and how they actually deploy it, as long as it's to the standards of what we want it to look like and what the overall, you know, use is going to be as far as what we're trying to accomplish from a, a city look, so to speak. Telling them this is, or whoever, this is what we'd like to see. Let's not get caught up in how they procure it. Because we're not, we're not going through anything crazy here. Like you said, there's probably about 20 different places. You can get stuff right now without anything like that.
So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna, I'm gonna kind of refine it to some standards that we're looking for. We would love to do these old globe lights that we have, you know, the multi-head. That's a, that, those are hard to find, and the only places I see them are in downtown, like Seattle and Vancouver and Victoria. And there's a reason. They're very expensive. I would love to see that, and maybe we could do some pricing, but I'm a little concerned that that's a pretty steep ask. What you, the standard decorative lights that you see are the acorn style, and they're shaped like an acorn, kind of pointy at the bottom, comes up and has a little top like that. I wanna say that there's an acorns light in Hammer Heritage. I'm not too sure about that.
I believe there is. Mm-hmm.
So that's kind of the standard one that we do. And then the Oaks Building, they did, they did an acorn-style light there, too. So steel pole, we'll set a, a, a height parameter, something that, you know, we're not just picking a random height. Pick something that's available and that works for Public Works and isn't gonna be overly expensive, and is kind of a standard. Give them like a two- or three-foot range. And then they'd all have to be consistent from there. Acorn-style cutoff, steel pole. Those are some of the, those are some of the standards I'd like to throw in there to give us something to go from on this. I think this, uh, I think new buildings over 5,000 square feet should, I think, my opinion, I don't know the planning commission's opinion, that's a pretty good-sized building.
Is that like footprint, or is that total square footage?
It says square footage, so.
And then how?
It's still a big building.
But that's probably like, what, I mean, if it's a two-story or three-story, that's like one light in front of it, right? I mean.
Yeah, I suppose we should have a standard for, you know, how many feet on center. And it's really gonna depend on how long their frontage is.
Right. I feel like that has more to do with it than the size, the square footage size of the building, right?
That's the trigger to require it. So if somebody has a long frontage and they just put a 2,000-square-foot building fronting around the front, but they have a long frontage, yeah, we are missing the opportunity for them to, to put it. Like, if you think of the Cedron Building, it's not a big building. I wanna say it's 1,600 square feet. But it has a pretty long frontage there. How many, we probably get three streetlights across that frontage, and that would have a pretty nice effect. So maybe you're right. Instead of 5,000 square feet, we say over such-and-such length of frontage.
I think.
Who's spoke? What'd you say? Or could do both. Speak up, couldn't hear you.
So I would think if we're trying to go for similar to what we have, say, downtown in Metcalf now, if you're coming in on Ferry and you want it to blend with that, I would think you'd wanna go at least the same height and distance apart as what we already have.
I, I agree 100%, but what I can tell you is those lights are substandard. So.
Yeah, I know.
They're short for a typical light. Maybe not terribly. They don't put off a lot of light, so they're really close together. I think modern standards, they actually, uh, light poles are able to throw more light. So they can be farther apart.
So we want these people to pay for some fancy light that's supposed to bring it into our downtown area to match our lights that we're not gonna probably have anymore because they're substandard?
Oh, no, no. We're, we're gonna keep those lights to, to the, to, to, that'll, you'd have to, it'll be a fight to the death to get rid of those. Like, people love those.
Oh, yeah. I'll be out there tied to one of them.
You, you can't get those anymore.
I will. Strapped to it, naked. That's a side you don't wanna see.
So I'm not saying that we would change those at all.
I think that we should approach the city council about starting a fund for the lights. I don't think it's fair to businesses. And if you have one business that has the right amount of square feet, that has to put in so many lights, and then this little place over here doesn't have to put in one, I mean, it just, how are you gonna have your consistency there? I think that this is a city issue and not a business issue.
It's for new construction that we're talking about.
Well, and how's that gonna look? Oh, this building here is brand-new. They're gonna build this building with these pretty lights, but then this block has, still got your crappy old regular streetlights, and they don't have to change them. That just doesn't make sense to me.
It rewards the smaller builder for not having to do it. Now, maybe we, maybe we just, maybe we just say, I mean, if the goal is to do it on Ferry Street, if you develop on Ferry Street, you have to put a streetlight in, a decorative streetlight, and we name it. I mean, if that really is the goal, the, the effect is pretty impressive. So is it impressive enough to require people to do it is really the planning commission's call, and ultimately, the city council makes the decision, but.
I think it's worthy on Ferry Street specifically. I don't, my only concern is that if those buildings are, if that stretch is developed by different. by different people, I, you know, I don't know how many parcels are there where the old Ford dealership is. And I mean, that's really what we're talking about, right? Like, the, the old Ford dealership and it's two sides of the street. And if those are, when those are developed, it would make sense that like all those lights are the same and they're the same on both sides of the street. And I, I'm a little bit concerned about sort of a piecemeal approach to it because then you get one developer who's developing, maybe they buy the old overflow building and they're just going to build one little commercial thing or mixed-use thing there and they're going to put in one light and well, does it match all the other lights on the street?
Well, at that point, we would make it match, right?
Right. But, or, but are they like, well, I can't find those lights or those lights are too expensive for me, you know, whatever. I don't, I don't know. I, it just seems like we need to figure out a way if, if getting lighting along Ferry Street is the goal, I think that's a worthy goal personally. We need to figure out a mechanism by which to make it uniform and not hodgepodge. And, and so the spacing is uniform and the look of the lights is all uniform and that. And it seems, I think the easiest way is to have the city do that, but it, I think that whoever develops that land should be the one who pays for it.
Well, you, like, I mean, concern about price isn't something that the planning commission should necessarily worry about because they develop or, say there was no curb gutter sidewalk along that area. They're required to put curb gutter and sidewalk and develop parking spaces along their front of their building. And these are all public street improvements that they have to do as part of the development. Now, if you look at it from the perspective, you're like, well, that sounds really expensive to make them to do. We shouldn't do that. That, I mean, that's not really how it works. The city needs these amenities. And if the city, if the planning commission and the city council believe that these amenities along State Street are important, then, you know, we just make it as, make decorative lighting along that stretch a requirement of development. And, uh, you know, you can say the benefit to not only the city, but the, the buildings that front along there is going to be vast because of this improved street lighting situation. There's, it's just a cost of development. And so I don't know if you need to worry too much about the cost. They're expensive, but they're not like building a road expensive. If there was, if there wasn't a road there, they'd have to build a road. So it's really just the same idea of any developer has to pay into the adjacent right-of-way improvements.
I believe they're investing in an amenity as well, that when you have those types of add-ons, it just makes the real estate and why people would want to even be here and invest in what they built, just even a more positive on top of that. You're investing in the community, just like your schools, roads, everything else. And that's what it really comes down to.
When we, we went to, it's, uh, it's been several years since we took a trip to someplace like Bothell to look at design standards for the CBD. I mean, that, that's the kind of thing that as you're walking on the street, you're like, this is cool. Like, it makes you want to be there, having a uniformed street feel. Now, that, that, I think the city did a lot of the road improvements along there in that area to help stimulate development and to have a cohesive look. So it's different, you know? But they're required to have, you know, I, there's clearly some sort of public art requirement in that area because there was public art on the corners.
All over the place.
All over the place. So it must have been a requirement, whether it was, you know, things put into the, the concrete in the sidewalk just to be decorative or a sculpture or whatnot. Those were requirements and we're not requiring that kind of stuff.
Yeah, which interesting you bring that up. That's exactly what I look like. And if we want to do a field trip, let's go to Coopville. Coopville's got some pretty cool stuff. And that whole area from the waterfront straight on back to Highway 20, they got a good mix of all kinds of things going on there, from the hospital straight on down to the water, down to the corner, residential, businesses, everything.
My old office.
Is that where it is? Yeah, I love that little town. Yeah.
Front bar and grill.
Yeah, field trip.
And, you know, if the planning commission wants to do field trips, we've done them in the past and they're kind of fun. So if you have any good ideas for a field trip, you know, just knock it around and we'll see if we can make it happen. We did it in the spring last time. We had a lovely day.
We did.
That was fun. So it seems to me like we probably need another crack at this before we go to a public hearing, right? And is there a way, um?
Well, before we go to a public hearing, you, you want another crack before, so you're saying two more meetings?
Well, I don't know. I mean, it seems like it's nice when the public hearing is on a finished document that we can have a public hearing and then the planning commission doesn't really need to do much more discussion. We can just move it along.
Well, hopefully we can have a public hearing next time and we'll have it to a state where you want to have.
Are pretty close.
Pretty close. Now, I, I think there's going to be, I don't really know what to do about this decorative lighting, uh, idea because there's a lot of varying opinions here and I've got some direction to go in, but I don't really have anything definitive. So that's going to be challenging and I'm concerned that it's going to drag this on for months and months and months, just this one issue. So let's, I, I'd recommend that we have a public hearing at the next one. I'll, I'll provide something to you. And if you just, if we just can't hammer it out, the, the public, the lighting idea, like try to hammer it out at the, at the next meeting. If not, kill it or make it very generic. But we, I don't want it to drag this thing on forever.
Agreed.
I just think about what you were saying with the downtowns and these places and how nice they look. But to my understanding, a lot of it was, as you said, done by the town, like downtown revitalization projects where the city installed that. And it's going to be difficult other than if there's a big development, like the old Ford dealership to, to really get that consistent. And like, I know I'm kind of repeating what's already been said, but it just, I don't, I don't really see a way around that for the, the rest of the developments. Maybe that one spot, I don't know if we can be that specific and say whoever develops that has to put in streetlights.
And, you know, maybe we just hand them the standards that we want.
But.
But you got to do this.
Because if somebody comes in later, they may not have the same style. And then we're going to have, you know, some looking like this and some looking like that, even if we specify height and everything is, yeah. I guess if the goal is street lighting in general and we're not caring quite about them looking identical, then maybe that's not an issue, but.
Yeah, we can probably specify the color at least. So if you have a guidelines of the way different things, like different styles of acorn lighting or whatever it comes up with, as long as they're the same color and they're kind of the same, if, you know, in one big development, everything would be the same. And that's, let's say, something goes in next to it, as long as they're kind of similar. I mean, the roads move, you, you really, unless you're walking it and saying, oh, wow, this is different than that. But there is some kind of consistency I think we could put together, especially on not only design, but also the coloring of what goes in there. What do we have on Metcalf now? It's kind of like a green kind of tint on it. Yeah.
Green steel poles.
By the way, the, the streetlights we currently have are every 75 feet.
Noted.
Is that the pretty decorative ones downtown or are normal big ones?
That's the decorative ones downtown.
75 feet? Okay.
Somebody's been playing around on Google Earth.
Noted. So can we move on?
We have thirty-six of them to be exact.
So with that, is there any more discussion on, uh, the proposed updates to Chapter Three and, uh, lighting and pretty much everything else? We've, I think we've done a really good job tonight on getting things kind of in a good direction.
I just wanted to say thank you for, to Nicole or, and you for all your work in adding the definitions and working on this.
Can I make a ask? When, when we see this next time, is it possible to get it, um, in sort of a consistent format that doesn't have all the strike-throughs? And does that have to remain in there until we've approved a new version? Or, um, the different colors and the formatting that's stricken through and not stricken through? And it, I just find it, when I'm going through these, like, a little bit hard to deal with. And I know that it's probably, so anyway, as we get closer to a finished copy, it would be helpful for me personally to have, just like, is this a, like, just a clean copy of it, I guess, would be the easy way to say it, but.
I'll tell you what, I'll send you a Word version and you can accept the changes and then it's just a clean copy.
It'll get rid of all that other stuff.
Yep. Just go to accept all changes under, under the review pane.
Okay. I'll see if I can manage that. I probably can.
Yeah, sorry for, I mean, we've had, you know, three different people work on this. So that's why the different colors and whatnot.
I, I, I think you guys are doing an awesome job and I appreciate all the work that goes into it. And I, um, yeah. So I think it, overall, I think it's looking pretty good. So.
I second that.
Okay.
So can we move on to new business nun? The final is planning commission discussion information items, none on agenda. But if anybody has anything they would like to add to the good of the order, go ahead. I'm sorry.
We have a new permit tech. Her name is Katie Quinn and she's right here. Some of you came in after we were doing some introductions, so.
You refer to her as new business.
Katie joined us yesterday. Yesterday, and she's already here at Planning Commission taking notes.
Right into the fire.
And do you regret that decision after tonight?
So we're very, very happy to have Katie join us. And so come by and say hi sometime when you go, if you feel like, some of you drop by.
Now that we could actually walk in. Okay, back to, uh, planning, the planning commission discussion information items, none on the agenda. But does anybody have anything to add? Are we good for somebody to propose a, uh, an adjournment, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I'll second that.
Motion is approved. Meeting adjourned at 8:33 PM. Thank you.
Thank you.